I always feel like I need to wait for at least the chorus to kick in before I start talking. Maybe we need to start playing the music earlier so that I don't feel like I'm cutting everybody off. Counsel, thank you so much for letting us throw this meeting on your calendar with not a whole lot of notice. The purpose of this meeting is to update you on some developments and to get your direction and your thoughts. If you don't mind, I'm gonna take a little bit of time just to kind of update you and kind of set the stage for the questions that we want to pose. First week of December, I received a letter from the Greater Phoenix Leadership Health Task Force. GPL or Greater Phoenix Leadership, I know you're all familiar with the organization. It's essentially made up of all the CEOs of the major employers and businesses in the state. The Health Task Force is all of the healthcare CEOs. This letter was from the CEO of Cigna and Honor Health and Banner and Dignity and United Healthcare, Blue Cross Blue Shield, T Gen, Phoenix Children's, you know, literally all of the healthcare providers in the state. The letter was asking for the City of Mesa to do all that we can to respond to the spread of COVID in the state. And talking about how dire the situation was. There were four or five bullet points that they were certainly specifically asking for us to weigh in on or to help with. Most of them frankly are beyond our authority. They have to do with issues that really are not in our prerogative per the governor's executive order. Having to do with groups in excess of 25, outdoor eating, curfews. But a couple of points, they also wanted a mask mandate, but the other, the point that was clearly on our plate was they were asking to shut down sports, close our fields and shut down youth sports activities. So I received that letter the first, like I said, the first week of December. And then last week, that was followed up with, I had a Zoom meeting with Banner's chief medical officer, Dr. Bessel. And she communicated the same message again, just talking about, and the terminology that she was using to describe the situation was obviously meant to get our attention. It was very dramatic. She was saying that, you know, the situation was very grim, dire, as she said, for the next two months. The hospital capacity in our city is going to be stretched and stressed. They likely will adopt crisis standards of care, meaning that there, you know, a lot of people that normally would be accepted to the hospital are not. They're gonna be, they expect to be at about 150% of capacity, meaning, you know, there'll be double bunking people in the hospital. And, you know, just the words that I wrote, and she said, this is all before, really, they feel like they've experienced the impact of the holidays. But they already are at or exceeding the summer peaks. And the quote I wrote down is, she said, "We are going to be crushed." So that was clearly, you know, something that was meant to get our attention. And she again lobbied for the bullet points that I just described to you earlier. But again, also reiterated that something that they think that's clearly within our ability to do is shutting down sports and the use of our fields. When I had that meeting with her last week, I contacted Mr. Brady and asked him to schedule this meeting so that we could discuss the appropriate response to this request from really all of the healthcare providers in our community. Also, in terms of scheduling meetings, I want you to know that we could obviously have a long meeting just talking generally about our city's COVID response. And so I've asked Mr. Brady to put on the agenda for our January 11th meeting, our first study session of the new year. A more comprehensive presentation from staff talking about the city's COVID response, including our Post Cares Act programming, our role in vaccine deployment. And, you know, I'm sure there'll be other issues that need to be discussed in that meeting. So the agenda for this meeting is pretty narrow, limited to this discussion of the sports fields. But I want you to know that the first meeting, our next meeting, we will have a comprehensive discussion and presentation from staff on all things COVID. So anyway, after we scheduled this meeting, the next thing, the other thing I did at the end of last week was met with Visit Mesa. And it was a very well, it was a Zoom meeting, but it was two screens of, you know, wall-to-wall faces. It was all the hotels and tournament operators and many restaurateurs, you know, and people that would be directly impacted by anything that we did relative to our sports fields. And I asked them, what would, you know, what would the impact of this be on you and on your businesses? I think you all received today an email from Mark Garcia at Visit Mesa that summarizes what the pending reservations are tied to the use of City of Mesa fields. And you've seen that, and I don't need to go over it in detail with you. But it's fair to summarize it by saying that between now and the month of February, we're talking about literally thousands of hotel bookings. And what I learned last week also is that if we took this action, the immediate impact would be the loss of several hundred jobs. The, some of the hotels said they currently have staffs of like 94. And really, the only thing they're receiving right now is sports-related bookings. And if this dried up, they would immediately lay off, you know, 90 of the 94 people at the hotel. So that's a particularly somber, you know, thought is that there might, we might see hundreds of people lose their jobs right before the holidays. So given that, that very, you know, we have two very legitimate and very competing interests, you know, to try to resolve here. So I think that the dilemma that's confronting us is what can we do to do our part to fight the spread of the virus and hopefully save the hundreds of jobs that are critically important? I think it wouldn't help the spread of COVID either if a lot of people lost their health insurance and their ability to provide for their family. After that meeting, I want you to know that I appreciate the way that Visit Mesa responded. They have had, have been working furiously over the weekend. And they have presented in the email that you received today, a memorandum of understanding that details enhanced safety measures that the hospitality community in our city would like to impose on themselves, raising the bar to do their part to fight COVID. And I want to express my appreciation to Mark Garcia and the staff at Visit Mesa and all of the business people that were involved in quickly coming together and making these great, looking for creative and impactful ways to address this problem. Also, so the hospitality industry is ready and willing to raise the bar. Now also, there's obviously a role for our organization, for the City of Mesa, to play here because these are our fields and we need to be responsible in the way that we manage them. So I think it is going to be necessary for us to adopt stricter rules for the use of our fields. But maybe more importantly, maybe most importantly, is strictly enforcing the rules that we have. I think to this point, you know, that my observation has been that there's room for improvement in the way that these rules are enforced. So even before the events that I described to you of the last couple of weeks, I know that Mr. Hirschberg has been, he and his staff have been working on updating and strengthening the rules of use for our fields in response to Governor Ducey's most recent updated executive order, you know, increasing the burden on cities as far as enforcement goes of events. And so at this time, I am anxious to hear from council, but if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Mr. Hirschberg to update us on what some of the proposed tightening of the rules of use for our fields are. Mr. Hirschberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. Mark Hirschberg, acting deputy city manager. Also with me today is Andrea Moore, acting director of Parks Recreation Community Facilities. If you recall back to our conversations regarding our reopening phases and plans in May that we were having, we have held pretty firm regarding sports league organizers, regardless of the venue that they were using to submit mitigation plans and their efforts to control and the spread of COVID, as well as putting some pretty strict guidelines in place for field capacities, in particular, staying at 50 people per field. We have maintained that throughout this entire operation. Some cities have allowed more, some have allowed less, some haven't even opened to that point as well. As the mayor mentioned, with the Governor Ducey's Executive Order 2020-59, we now have to submit to ADHS mitigation plans and attestation forms that those will be enforced and put into practice. So with that, we've been working with Mr. Smith's staff and the city attorney's office to tighten our strategies as well for those events and what those look like. And it's really, as the mayor mentioned, putting more teeth to those and what those look like with some, the opportunities to cancel events, terminate future permits, and stop events in the middle if actions aren't being followed. Whether this is a local league or a tournament, these event organizers and league operators will be asked to go back and sign these forms. So first, it'll start off with them completing and signing a form that first agrees that they understand both the governor's executive orders that are in place, as well as the recommendations from the CDC, as well as ADHS, and clearly state the mask mandate that's in place under the governor, or under the mayor's proclamation of mask mandate. We will ask that all, the tournament organizers have all players and officials and spectators while they're entering the facility and leaving the facility and in all common areas that those masks are worn. For players and officials, while they are in the field of play, those masks can then be removed. And then for spectators, asking that those masks remain on. What we're seeing as a sports parent myself, we're seeing that there's not necessarily the social distancing taking place, but what a lot of the tournament organizers, when I go to my son's athletic events, they are asking the parents and coaches to keep masks on throughout the entire event. So putting that in place and asking those event organizers to put that in place as well for their events. And again, reminding the six-foot social distancing when you're not around families or immediate members of your family. And again, with the limits of 50 per field, that really is, in most cases, allowing one parent per an athlete. The asking event organizers to remind their staff and remind their coaches and participants about the exposure symptoms and making sure that if they've been exposed or have any symptoms, that they should not come to the event, should not participate in the event, and should stay home whether those symptoms are fever, cough, soreness, shortness of breath, et cetera. And then asking them, even though we have signs in place, asking them to assist us, reminding those spectators, those participants, that, of the social distancing and mask requirements and general hand washing and sanitizing, and asking them to supplement the signage that we already have in place by putting additional out there. And same with hand washing and hand sanitizing stations where they have the opportunity for their event to install or bring in portable, in addition to what we already have on site, hand washing and sanitizing stations. I mentioned the field capacity, we will maintain at the 50. Swimming, we will have to address based on the configuration of the event and the pool, just because each pool size is a little bit different and the events are different based on the number of lanes required. So we will work with each event organizer on swimming pool capacities. And then again, the mandatory enforcement, asking the event organizers to, with their plan to enforce this and to be able to provide the city, the names of those individuals who will be responsible so that we can check with, our site supervisors and park rangers can check in with those designated people at each location. When we see something not taking place, asking them to take action immediately to address the, and again, all of this should be in their mitigation plans at a minimum, if not more, for what they've already submitted to the city and that we're also submitting to ADHS as part of attesting that those mitigation plans will be in place and enforced. And then again, as I mentioned early on, we're going to ask them to sign this form and verify that they understand failure to comply with those things can and will lead without warning to, could lead to immediate cancellation of that game or that event if it's one particular field and/or the entire event if it seems to be rampant throughout the entire sports complex. And again, hopefully, we don't get to that point, but if it does, then we would look at not issuing any future permits for that violation until we're through this crisis. So hopefully, Mayor, that addresses some of the concerns that you've heard and puts a little more meat, if you will, to addressing the policies that we have in place and asking those event organizers and those participants to help us so that we can make, keep these fields open and keep these kids active and playing. It's really, we're at that point where we need everybody's assistance to help us follow these rules and these simple measures that we've tried to put in place to allow the kids of the community and those participating in those events to continue to participate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hirschberg. Counsel, I'm anxious to hear your thoughts on this. I'll tell you that a few days ago, I was leaning towards recommending that we restrict the use of our fields, prohibit traveling teams and to really, to respond to the dire situation that our healthcare providers have presented. After meeting with Visit Mesa, seeing their response and hearing Mr. Hirschberg's more strict protocols, I'm currently, my personal opinion is I think that we can give this some time to see if it works. But I think we need to message very strongly to the community that the next step is closing our fields. That none of us want to see that happen. I think it would be, I want my son and, you know, the young people of our community to not be, I mean, to have that outlet. I think it's good for their emotional and mental health and physical health as well, obviously. But I think we're very close to having to do something drastic unless the community catches on. And so we're gonna have to, you know, the time for general persuasion is over, that we have to have strict enforcement of these rules. Or I think the next step is to do what we've been asked to do, which is shut our fields. I'm sorry, I've done all the talking, so I'm anxious to hear from you. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, are you gonna be, as part of protocols, are they gonna ask for temperature checks? Maybe random temperature checks for some of the players as well as those individuals as they go to hotels? Is that going to be included in that? I didn't see it when I looked at the, I saw the masks. But maybe they're there, I didn't see that. So they are including that?
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, we did not put a temperature requirement in, just because of the various factors involved with that. One, who knows how far, in some cases, you're walking and what equipment you're carrying at the same time. I know even just walking myself, when I come into the building, taking my temperature from, if it's a warmer day outside and walking in, that it reads a little bit higher. But then when I cool down, you know, five minutes of sitting there, then it's back to normal again. So we have not done temperature checks at those outdoor facilities. And as far as the hotels, that's not the city's place to be involved in that factor.
Right, but as they go in the hotels, I'm wondering if, or if they, before they actually go to the event, they do just random temperature checks? I, you know, I can't certainly, you know, obviously a high temperature would indicate that there's something wrong with the individual as they go participate in the sporting activity. So that would be just one of my concerns. What are we gonna do? And then, I don't know, Mayor, if this is your question, whoever. We're at 91% capacity in our hospitals. And what is, you know, I'm afraid of going to 100% and then 150% capacity. Although I am in support of, I think kids need an outlet. And this is probably the best time of year for them to participate in sports. And I would hate to deny them that opportunity. And I appreciate Mark Garcia and his staff for saying the recommendations. But I am concerned about it, and let's see where council goes on this decision.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Mr. Heredia, and then Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, question, Mark. Is this, do we have staff that goes out and checks on these tournaments that are happening or these facilities? And are they, are we then, you know, checking up on if they're following protocols? Or this is a self-policing aspect of that they're, they're up, they're the ones that are gonna police these enforcement rules that we're setting up?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Heredia. The answer is twofold. Yes, we do have site supervisors at each location. Depending on that location, sometimes they rotate between one or two sites. As well as our park rangers are, to the best of their ability, out and about at the different parks, checking on things. That's why we are, one of the things we are asking for is the direct contacts from each of these event organizers who will be placed at each facility and be responsible for ensuring that their mitigation plan is being implemented and enforced and that their participants and those spectators that are there are following those mitigation plans, including the social distancing and the mask mandates that's in place throughout the city. And then if our site supervisors and/or park rangers come to a site where it's not occurring, they can contact those people, see if they can get it under control. And if it doesn't, then by way we've presented this new, these new rules and these new formats, we can cancel that event at that time.
And then another question, I presume the large segment of these tournaments happening outdoors, just to clarify, is there any indoor, I know we're limited in indoor facilities that we have in Mesa for sporting events. But is there any indoor activities or to that nature that we're also looking into?
Mayor, Councilmember, we have, we have the limited capacities at the Red Mountain Center. We have not provided any of our traditional youth sports leagues at those facilities because of this. We, the only indoor league that we are currently scheduled to run, start beginning in mid-January, is a volleyball league. And we have spaced the teams apart, and we're talking about 14 people total between the two teams, roughly 16 people between each team. And we've spaced the games out and not allowed only the two teams playing into the facility at a time.
Okay. And then last question, what are the other cities? I know recently Phoenix, you know, closed down their tournaments. What are other East Valley cities doing currently on this issue, this topic we know of?
Mayor, Councilmember, the only East Valley city that has closed their fields outside of Phoenix is Tempe at this point. All other fields remain open with increased, much like we're doing some increased preparation and mitigation on, with the event organizers. There are additional cities that have closed fields in the West Valley, however.
So are they, are these East Valley cities considering closing down? Because I know, you know, a lot of these tournaments, based on fields, they go, they spread out through to the East Valley cities. Are any other, that you know of, East Valley cities thinking of shutting down facilities other than Tempe?
Yeah, Councilmember Andrea was on a call last week with other directors throughout the state, and there is no indication at this point that that was gonna occur in any other city, East Valley city.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Heredia, thanks for asking the question on who's the enforcement on that. I was thinking, I was asking Mark earlier about who's gonna make the call about stopping tournament play and league play. But for clarification, Mark, what are the amount of players and spectators allowed for each game? Whether it's soccer, rugby, lacrosse, you know, across the board? Do we have metrics for that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the number changes based on, for a number of factors. One, based on the age group and the level of play. That number, the roster size changes, the sport obviously changes, how many people are on a roster. So we have stuck to the 50 per field, and that has allowed at least one parent per spectator, the coaches and the officials, regardless of the sport.
And which sport would be the maximum number of players? I mean, some of the other sports probably doesn't require as large of, less than, way less than 50, I guess.
So the maximums would be, that are occurring on our fields would be soccer for older kids. The roster gets a little bit bigger. And then on younger kids where we have more than, where you can split the field in half and two games can occur on a single field, those would be the largest amount of spectators and players on a field.
Okay, so I get that. If there was a, so smaller youth groups, if there were two games playing on one field, you're saying, so there could be like 100 people on one field with the smaller age groups, correct?
Correct, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Mayor and councilmembers, I talked to a participant at one of the sports games, and he was really impressed at a referee, that they were playing soccer. The referee stopped the game and asked all the participants or spectators to put their masks on. And he wasn't gonna resume play until there was compliance. And so I said, you know, kudos to that referee for recognizing that, hey, they can do, you know, self-enforcement, really, and ask people to comply. I mean, it's just out of respect to other people who may or may not have underlying medical conditions or just, if you don't, you know, people just don't want to get sick. The other thing to me, I was just talking to somebody today. He had a hospitality job in Scottsdale, and he was let go because there was not enough business at the hotel that he was working at. It was a really nice hotel in Scottsdale, and he was now the general manager of a restaurant in District One. And he was so happy that he even had a job. But the hospitality industry has taken a hit. And with that, you know, I support the extra enforcement and work that we're gonna do. I think that the youth groups and, you know, they're the lowest people who will, or who could get sick. And I do recognize that overall, there is transmission of the disease, but I don't think it's a city that we can, I don't want to do overreach, is what I'm saying. I want the kids to have sports fields, their parents to go out and, you know, out of, they need to monitor themselves. And so with that, I support the extra rules that we're talking about. So with that, I'll stop my comments. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Luna, I think I saw your hand up earlier, and then Mr. Thompson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Hey, Mark, are the teams required to disclose if somebody gets COVID? Is that a requirement? I don't know, it might be a privacy issue.
Sorry, I'm looking at Mr. Smith.
Mayor and council, we're not requiring them to disclose, but we specifically require within this additional requirements that they, that anyone with COVID is prohibited from entering into the area. So if they're aware of somebody and then they still allowed them into the facility and we found out, we can then revoke their license for the entire event and then also not issue them any future event licenses.
So how will you determine when they have COVID? Are they gonna be required to get, a task to determine that, or how is that gonna happen?
So we're not gonna, so it would have to be a self-reporting situation in that situation, right? We're not gonna have onsite testing.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I was gonna, I kinda echo Mark, I, you know, you know, we just saw a lot of the high school football championship games being played, unfortunately. you know, we just saw a lot of the high school football championship games being played, unfortunately. Chaparral beat Highland for the 6A championship, darn it. But kudos to, to Chaparral for, for their victory. But we're seeing, you know, collegiate athletics continue on, we're seeing professional athletics continue on. You know, I was amazed, I was watching, I was out last night and I saw the, an MMA fight on TV, and I was like, wow, they're still even allowing MMA to, to fight in close combat. And, and so, you know, so it kinda dawned on me that, that, that there's still sports activities happening. And, and back to a comment that was made earlier, I think the kids need that outlet, I think it's a, a great opportunity. I saw, I was out at Mountain Ranch this weekend, not everyone was masked, unfortunately. A lot of people were, a lot of the parents were, but they had a snow day at one of the parks. And to see the kids running around, playing in the snow, just having the time of their life, throwing snowballs and, and playing with each other and running around is amazing to see the youth having so much fun. And, and to allow them to do that in a sports, sports type field, whether it's lacrosse or softball or baseball or soccer, or whatever it may be, you know, you know, kudos to, to Mark Hirschberg and staff for setting those parameters and really kinda pushing the envelope on ensuring, at least from our standpoint, that you can be as safe as possible. I know the, the restaurants now are probably cleaner than we've ever seen restaurants before. And hotels are probably cleaner than we've ever seen hotels before. I know my sister was out a few months ago visiting and she took a picture of the airline that she was on, of the floor. And she was like, you know, look at, look at the floor on this, on this aircraft, it's spotless, you could literally almost eat off of, of the floor. And so we're seeing businesses put that extra effort in to ensure that they're staying sanitized and they're staying clean and, and complying with the governor's mandates and so forth. And I think as long as, as we can do the same and people will act accordingly, I support allowing the tournament play and keeping our fields open to, to the public and to our, to our youth. That's, that's me.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Other comments? Councilmember Duff.
I realize this is a really difficult decision, and I believe all our hoteliers and restaurants and airlines, all that are doing excellent jobs in the safety protocols. However, people are not doing their best. And I'm wondering, what can we do to ensure that people are strictly abiding by these rules? I see some of them written out, I mean, other than like a slap on the wrist. If they don't, can they be pulled from play? Can we require testing within three days of playing, you know, coming here for or playing a game? What can we do to really get people to stop mingling, you know, like in, in locker rooms? Do we have locker rooms to begin with? In cars, you know, crowding together without protection, without masks? What can we do to enforce that, to make sure that people are doing what's required of them?
If you don't mind, I'd like to piggyback a little bit on, on Jen's comment, because something that Mark said a moment ago, that to me seems like a, a great idea, the, the example he cited where the, the game official halted play until the spectators, you know, came into compliance with masks. That, that seems, I mean, I, I know we are gonna require these tournament organizers to do increased enforcement. But I, to me, that seems, I would love to write that into our, our agreement that, that in addition to, you know, the organizers being responsible for enforcement, we also would like the, get the game officials to adopt a policy that if they see spectators not complying, that they halt play. Also, I was at an event, not, not a youth sports event, but I was at a, a, a food truck event on Friday. And it was, it was open to the public and, and the organizers, you know, did a great job putting out the signage that they needed to and, you know, doing everything that the city at, you know, the sanitation stations, and they did, they followed all the rules. But in spite of that, I would, I would say the event probably was, got a C when it came to mask wearing. And now, clearly, you don't have to wear your mask when you're eating, when you're sitting down to eat food. But there, there were still way too many people that were standing in line, you know, not observing the, the mask mandate. And I, I think that, now, the organizers, you know, they, they had a sign out front, it was small and it was, you know, tacked to their chain link fence. But I, I think maybe, and I don't mean to micromanage our, our city staff, but Mr. Brady, I, I would love to see us spend a few thousand dollars to, to print hundreds of, of mask, large A-frame masks signs that we then distribute to all of the events, in public and private. Because we've got to do something to, to, as Councilmember Duff indicated, we've gotta change people's behavior. Because what's happening now is not working.
Yeah.
The dire situation that the hospitals, you know, are, are paying for is, means that something has to change. Because in, in spite of all the, the additional cleanliness and, and rules that are out there, we, we are in a death spiral right now, you know, as a community, it's, it's, it's not getting better. So I guess the, the question for Mr. Hirschberg and maybe Mr. Smith is, can we, can we throw in some additional requirements? Like, you know, sports officials, we wanna include them in enforcement.
Mayor, if I may, let me, I'll, I'll share with you, as I mentioned, I, I'm a sport parent, baseball. And one of the, the tournaments we played in two weeks ago, I believe, part of the event organizers mitigation plan was if a parent wasn't following the rule, the parent, not only would the parent be removed, but the player would be removed. So I think a, a lot of these events may already have those plans in place. I don't know that we necessarily wanna put the onus on the official, because hopefully they're watching the field of play and the game and keeping those athletes safe and, and, and for nothing dangerous happening. But I have personally witnessed in, in my own family's experience that when those rules are in place, and whether you, regardless of where you are on the side of masks and whether you think they work, they don't work, whatever it is, if you want your child to play, you'll wear the mask. And, and that's where I think we're coming down to, if this is about keeping the kids playing, then the simple things we're trying to, to ask people to do, like wear a mask and spread out, hopefully that's enough. And, and if we can get those event organizers on board, who many of which are already are, and our local leagues on board when they start up again after the new year, to, to remind them that those simple things will keep our kids active and, and keep these fields available. Otherwise, we're gonna be back here, unfortunately, having another conversation.
And Mayor, let me just weigh in, it's, to say that we have to change behavior is, I think is gonna be difficult for government to do. I think what we can do, and where we have the ability to be most effective, is what Mark said. If you have to have a permit, some kind of a permission from the city to hold that event, and we can revoke that or remove a participant, or we can shut your event down. If people are sitting around a bonfire at a food truck event and the organizers are not willing to enforce that mask mandate on someone else, I, I think it's difficult for the city staff to go up to those individuals, cause it will be confrontational. We will just, but we'll go to the event organizer and tell them their event is being shut down and that they will not have a permit for the next, you know, for, we'll just shut down, there will be no more permits. I think that's the, really the most effective way, because for government to affect that kind of behavior within the individual becomes very confrontational. With the, with the organizers and the rules, we have much more effect, because they become part of the process of enforcement, and they, it's their, the people that are there are paying the fees to them to be there. And if the organizer is like a restaurant, if you don't wear shoes or socks, they're gonna tell you to leave. If you don't have a mask on, they're gonna tell you to leave.
Thank you, Mr. Brady, I, I don't disagree with you, I, I'm not suggesting that, that the city, you know, park rangers, you know, be out actively, you know, trying to evict people from events. But, but I, but I, that's why I'm wondering if we can build into these requirements that were, that we have with the event organizers that, that the rules ought to reflect some of these good practices that Mr. Hirschberg and Mr. Freeman have observed, where, you know, your, your, your child's participation in the event is tied to, you know, your compliance with the rules. It, it seems like a, one of the best practices that we're, you know, that we're looking forward to try to include in our policies.
Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Duff.
Yeah, just to talk a little bit more, I know we're talking about the out-of-state tournaments, the club sports. But we need to think about this for all of our sports, across the board, in everything we do and every event, not even just sports, every event. I think, unfortunately, we have to be very, very strict at this. We're at a dire situation right now, the worst that we've approached in the seven or eight months we've been dealing with. This is, we're at the worst state ever, and we have to be strict about that. And we have to be diligent, even personally, as we go out, to ask people to wear their masks. We could divide things in half if everybody would wear masks. But I think we have to be consistent across the board, not only sports, all events. Because we have to turn things around. Over the last two weeks, 85202 had the, was the highest infection rate in the state. And last Friday, Arizona was, had the highest rate of infection in the United States. We are at a critical point, and we have to be good stewards of this unless we're going to be faced, you know, at, you know, more critical decisions affecting people's lives even more than they are now. So I just wanna encourage us to instill some strict protocols on all events. And we, we haven't even hit Thanksgiving peak yet, and we still have Christmas and New Year's to go. So let's all be good stewards and good advocates for that. And is there anything that we can do on the hotel rooms to make sure it's like, just immediate families or just very small pods, I worry about in hotel rooms, it's, you can't wear a mask the whole time you're in a hotel room, that's unrealistic. What can we do to minimize, you know, large numbers of people in a hotel room?
You know, Jen, Jen, to that point, I, the, the, this memorandum of understanding that, that visit Mesa prepared, they, they do volunteer some, some protocols, you know, to try to segregate, to, to, you know, to keep people in, in groups and, and self-contained in their own rooms and, you know, to, to discourage, you know, people bumping into each other, you know, during their stay at the hotels. They're also, the, the hotels are very proud of some of these clean and safe standards that they've adopted when they reopened, you know, a, a few months ago, some, you know, some pretty, pretty strict guidelines that, that they will tell you that they're following in terms of hygiene and cleanliness. But some of the practices that, that you're referring to, I think are addressed in that memorandum of understanding. I know Mr. Freeman had his hand, hand up, and then Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor, I just, could we review again the implementation of what you're suggesting? So I know a lot of comments have been made, but just to circle back, and so I understand it, maybe my colleagues as well, so, thanks.
Sure, Mr. Mr. Hirschberg, will you give us the Reader's Digest version of, of your presentation? What, what are the bullet points that, that the city is adopting for stricter rules on the use of our fields?
Mayor, Council, again, as, as we've discussed, a lot of these are, the stricter rules that are going in place reflect the Governor's Executive Order 202059, that was just released as well a couple of weeks ago. And basically, the city, by authorizing these events to occur, has to attest to ADHS with mitigation plans and proof of those mitigation plans, we have to submit to ADHS each one of those events. With that, we are asking the event organizers to submit to us their mitigation plans, which includes their safety protocols in place, which at a minimum have to meet the city's requirements of limiting capacities to 50 people per field, to wearing masks, so that will no longer be encouraging wearing masks. It will be wearing masks for all, everybody when you're entering the facility and for players and officials, until they reach the field of play and are playing, can they then remove their masks? For spectators to wear their masks throughout the duration of the event or their time at the field. For, to encourage social distancing, to ask them to supplement with additional signage, reminders of, of hand washing, social distancing, mask wearing, to supplement where they can, additional hand sanitizing and hand washing stations throughout the sports complexes. And to attest and, and put all of that in writing, attest on a separate form that they understand all of that and remind their players again and their families that are participating in the offense, in the events about exposure symptoms and that, and the importance of not participating if feeling ill and showing up to the complex if any of those symptoms arise. By signing this form and attesting to that and, and providing us with the names of the individuals from their organization that will be onsite at each facility, enforcing their mitigation plans that they have attested to and that we have submitted to ADHS and attested that we will ensure that they're following those mitigation plans. Failure to do so will result in immediate cancellation of that event or that, or the entire tournament or event that may be occurring with the potential of not issuing any additional permits for the future, for their failure to comply with these. And if I may, Councilmember Duff, as, as your comments regarding all events, this, we have been working in, as a group between Parks, Recreation and Community Facilities and Business Services for all events over 50, we have to, to also post those mitigation plans. So there will be a site, there's already a site on the city's website where events need, outside of the Parks, Recreation and Community Facility events, any other event of more than 50 people has to apply to the city to have that event with a mitigation plan. Those are go-to business services and are reviewed, and we have to post those mitigation plans on the city's website as well. So all of those wheels are in motion, and, and those event organizers that are hosting those other events outside of sporting events will also have to sign a similar form attesting to that mitigation plan as well. So we have that, I just wanted to make sure council is aware that we, even though this conversation is, is regarding athletic events, we are focused on events throughout the city as a whole and trying to be consistent between all of those events as well and following those same protocols to get those best practices in place.
Mayor.
So, I'm sorry, let's, let's, Mr. Freeman finish his thought, and go ahead, Mark.
No, thank you, Mark, for refreshing my memory on that, there's a lot that you've said. So I, I really would like to see, reevaluate this, did you say, Mayor, in about, what, 30 days, 60 days, something like that? Reevaluate, oh, January 11th, right?
Yes.
All right, so we could kinda have an idea of how this is working for us. And the only thought, I thought, Mark, when you talked to, well, Mark Hirschberg, we don't have any tailgating in our parking lots, right, for these events, league or tournament play, where some other advisement and enforcement may have to be done, I don't, I don't think there's any tailgating type activities, right?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I have not personally witnessed that or heard of it, Andrea, I'm not sure if you have heard from, yeah, I, I mean, there's going to be times, again, the, you know, the parking lots aren't just serving the sports complex, in most cases, they're serving the entire park facility. So there are people out there, whether they're at the playground or a fishing pond or whatever, so there's people coming and going constantly. So is there traffic or are there people waiting in between games? I'm not gonna say that's not happening because it very well may be, but I have not seen barbecues out there and, and grills and everything pulled out in, in the parking lots, waiting for in-between games and, and teams congregating in large masses like that, personally.
I, I'm just asking the question, that's all, that you've covered that base. So that answers everything good for me, I just look forward to see how we've done in about 30 days or less, thanks.
Thank you, but before we move on, Mark- Before we move on, Mark, I think there's a, Mr. Freeman, when you kind of rehearsed the rules there a moment ago, something you said I didn't quite like. It said, the rules are, we encourage social distancing. I think that the time for using words like encourage is over. So I think we need to say that social distancing is required. And I also, I, I'm sorry, I can't get away from this notion that we ought to maybe link stopping play or excluding athletes from participation if they're, if the spectators, you know, that are accompanying that athlete are not complying with the rules. And I think the question Mr. Freeman asked about tailgating is a critical one. Even if we're not seeing it now, I think it needs to be clear to the organizers of these events that if they're in compliance out on the field, that's great. But they also need to be compliant in the parking lot and, you know, in the sidewalks, but, you know, leading up to the, to the event. And that onsite gatherings, you know, compliance doesn't just mean on the field of play. It means while they're on the premises, including parking lots. And, you know, tailgating is not okay. And I think we need to figure out how to include that in these rules.
So Mayor, I think the challenge with that is the organizers are renting the field. So we don't, it would create another layer of enforcement, of staffing, that we just can't, we don't, we aren't able to spread ourselves out. Now, I think if we see something, but, I mean, we allow people to go into our Ramadas and have birthday parties.
Okay, yeah.
So I.
I'm not talking about Ramadas. I'm talking about rogue tailgate parties. Well, you make a good point. I guess if people are allowed to go to their Ramadas and pull out their sack lunch, and we probably will have some teams that in-between plays, you know, might want to walk over to the Ramada and pull out a sandwich. So you're right. On reflection, that's maybe not as obvious as it was to me initially. Thank you.
And Mayor, the social distancing comment, it does not, the language does not say encourage. It says, I will ensure that all attendees will social distance.
Great. Thank you. That sounds a lot better. Councilmember Thompson and then Councilmember Luna.
Yeah, I just want to, I think there needs to be some leeway when it comes to mandating the masks for players coming right off the field. I think, you know, if you've just, you know, if you've made that first to home run off of somebody's RBI double or you just ran up and down the field and scored a goal and you come off the field and you're trying to catch your breath, I think there has to be some leeway that you don't have to mask immediately if you're trying to catch your breath, as long as you can go off to the side and self-isolate with your mask in hand. And as soon as you catch your breath, put your mask on and be able to rejoin your team socially, distance, of course. But, you know, I think there has to be some type of leeway given to the youth that are coming right off the field that need to catch their breath. And not just all of a sudden you stop play and start kicking people out and canceling events because you have a child or a youth that's trying to catch their breath off to the side. If we can allow them to be off, self-isolated, catch their breath and then rejoin their team, put their mask on, I think that would suffice as well. I don't know, just, I'm interested to hear from Mark and hear from my colleagues on that.
Mayor, council member, we would include the bench area and the dugout as part of the field of play. So that would eliminate that concern there.
Thank you. Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mayor. The organizers, Mark, are they going to have the parents sign off on the form? I just can't reiterate how important that we really need to enforce this. But the parents need to sign off, at least initialize the form, say, these are the rules. I understand that we are experiencing COVID. We have to do everything possible to protect our community. But I think they need some kind of form that they initialize and that the organizers collect those, just to reiterate. And I really do like the sandwich board idea about putting the rules again to remind the spectators, the parents, that if they're not compliant, that the tournament will be canceled. I think we have to continually remind these individuals that we are under COVID right now. The pandemic is not over. But we have to make sure that we protect our community as well as them.
So Mayor, council, we did, we have not contemplated that level acknowledgement from every family, from the families. We, that's why we've stuck to the permittee so that we are focused on the organizers and then requiring them to do the education and the enforcement on their side. Because, I mean, we can, we're trying to hold them accountable. They're the ones that have the most at stake here is the organizer to, for us. And so it's easier for us to deal with just them. And if they don't have, you know, however they want to get compliance, that's up to them. But we've really tried to focus on whoever we're issuing the permit for. Because you can imagine the hundreds and hundreds of families that are coming, whether it's for athletics or for any other social event. We just don't know who's showing up. But we know, we do know on record who the permittee is. And we have the ability to go back to them to enforce it or to shut down the activity that's taking place on a city facility. That's how we've approached it at this point.
Okay, thank you, council. Obviously, I, yes, Councilmember Duff.
Just circling back to hotel rooms. I still didn't clearly understand how we're controlling the number of people in a hotel room to be immediate family or just within two people. I must.
Yeah. I don't think we are. No, I didn't mean to imply that I, but I would refer you to the voluntary memorandum of understanding that Visit Mesa drafted. And there are some practices in there aimed at limiting the interaction between the tournament visitors and the general public and just the gatherings, you know, outside of what happens inside of hotel rooms. And I assume that the number of occupants in the room, you know, I think the hotel would probably be policing that. But I'm sorry, that's, we probably could have some additional discussion with Mr. Garcia and Visit Mesa about what the best practices are that they're volunteering to adopt in this situation.
Great. And then to Councilmember Thompson's comment, our mask mandate doesn't apply if you're, you know, alone, right? Or you're outside a social distance. So I think that would allow someone who needs to take off their mask and breathe, I understand that, to, you know, be able to isolate themselves from other people, you know, find someplace, you know, 10, 15 feet away and, or whatever, catch their breath and then come back to the group, you know. So I think that would certainly apply under our current mask mandate. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, other comments? Yes, Mr. Areddia.
Hey, Mark, what's the status on the permanent signage that we have? I know in the, earlier this year, we had some signage in our parks and our equipment that said that were closed during that time. Is there like semi-permanent signage right now in these facilities?
The signage still remains at the sports complexes. We have pulled them from the general park areas, though, as those amenities opened. So all the sports complexes, though, do have signage talking about the mass sanitizing and social distancing.
DM at the fields?
And which also, obviously, those sports complexes would include the fields of play.
Okay. Is that entering? I haven't been at a sports field in a while. But is that entering or throughout the park? Is there additional signage that we, that we, the city, can have, especially in these parks that have large events or tournaments that requires masks, even if it's outside, but requiring the mask? I'm not sure what they say currently.
Mayor, council member, we're waiting for this meeting. We're going to go back and review that signage and update it accordingly. We're waiting for this meeting to do that so that we could make sure we have the language correctly. And we'll go back and strengthen those accordingly based on the conversation we've had today and whatever final action direction you give us. But we will update that and add more signage wherever necessary, including the entrances to those, those key entry points to each of those parks and those facilities as well. And where we can, some just additional reminders where it makes sense throughout the parks, if possible.
Thank you. Counsel, other questions or comments on this topic? To Mr. Areddia's point, again, I think, well, there's a lot of people who, in good faith, I think, maybe would be more compliant if we were, if we communicated better, the need for the signs. I think there's a lot of people that just, you know, in the excitement of the event or in the hustle and bustle of, you know, getting your kids on and off the field, you know, maybe aren't as cognizant of the need to wear masks and to do social distancing as we would like them to be. So I think it would be great if we printed up a few hundred of these A-frame signs and had them peppered all over, you know, Red Mountain Soccer Complex and Quail Run and our baseball fields for these tournaments. But then also that we give them away like, you know, candy to everybody who's doing a private event or a public event. Because I, like I said, the event I went to Friday, I had to kind of look hard to find a sign that said, you know, that masks are required. I found it, but I don't think, I think I was the exception in the crowd looking for a reminder as to what the rules were. Counsel, I'm going to take the liberty of saying that it's my impression that the consensus of our group is to proceed with adopting these new guidelines, these more stricter guidelines for the uses of our field. And again, express our appreciation to Visit Mesa for their voluntary policy that's going to be adopted at the hotels and motels and members of Visit Mesa. And I think we give this some time. If, right now, we are in a dire situation when it comes to the hospital capacity in our community. And I think we need to look for every opportunity that we can as a community to support our healthcare providers and to do what we can to, again, flatten the curve. So I think that's the message that we want to communicate is that we're aware of and anxious to do what we can to mitigate the spread of the virus in our community and that we, at this time, feel like these more strict measures are the best way to do that. So thank you very much for convening today. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Thompson. We'll do that with a roll, with a voice vote. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.